And all the big, oh, okay.
What's that? Did you say that again?
I don't know. ARP, it's 50s.
I'm not 50.
I'm 62, but I'm not.
Excuse me.
I've been getting ARP stuff since I turned like 17, 18 in the mail.
They sent me one of my 50th birthday burnout suckers.
Yeah, I got that too.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the March 16, 2020 Crest Hill City Council meeting to order. If everyone will please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Froschay.
Here.
Barbara Schler.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we will continue with the agenda. You have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on March 2, 2020. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Schler, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro for the approval of the March 2, 2020 city council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the work session held on March 9, 2020. Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Colli-Pietro, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the work session minutes held on March 9, 2020. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, mayor and council. The first agenda item I have for your consideration this evening is a resignation and agreement and general release. This is for the resignation of Sergeant Doug Hicks.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderman, Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to the agreement? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item I have is for the ratification of the Constellation New Energy Electricity Supply Agreement. This is just for the city facilities, our wellhouses. This would be a cost of 4.316 cents for the next three years.
So moved.
Once again, I know it's merely, it's just some of our things are not spelled Crest Hill correctly.
Correct, correct. We'll get those modified ultimately in the final agreement.
Those things really annoy me.
And this is for the agreement just with city-owned property?
Correct, and this is the wellhouses primarily, yes.
Right, did I add a motion?
I made a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro for the agreement with Constellation New Energy for Electric Supply Agreement with the city-owned Crest Hill property. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is a resolution authorizing execution of a proposal for demising walls and stone facade for the proposed Public Works Building. After being unable to obtain quotes for this or bids for this portion of the Public Works Building, we did end up finally securing a bid that was under our initial cost estimates. We were asking for council to waive the bid and award this proposal to vote construction company for those two items and the cost of $77,125.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Overland for a resolution authorizing execution of a proposal for demising walls and stone facade for the proposed Public Works Building. Contract to be awarded to vote, construction company in the amount of $77,125. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1065.
Thank you. And the next nine resolutions are all related to the proposed City Hall building. These are the bulk of the awards for the construction from the grading through construction of the steel, so we will be working through those one at a time. The first is a resolution authorizing a bid award to P.T. Pharo construction for the City Center project. This is for the concrete portion of the site at $571,035.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderwoman Schler for a resolution authorizing bid award to P.T. Pharo Construction Company for the City Center project. And again, all of these next resolutions were discussed last Monday night at the city council work session. Questions or comments?
And just to add on real quick, mayor, I apologize. These were all the bid out, and these are the lowest bidders on the project.
Correct. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1066.
Thank you. The next is for a resolution authorizing bid award to J.L. Adler Roofing and Sheet Metal for the roofing of the City Hall, City Center project at $1,020,320.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro for resolution authorizing bid award to J.L. Adler Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated for the City Center project. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1067.
Next is a resolution authorizing a bid award to Ramcor for the City Center project. This is for a total of $999,470, and this is for the masonry work at the City Center.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Colli-Pietro, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for a resolution authorizing bid award project to Ramcor Incorporated for City Center project and the masonry. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1068.
Next is a resolution authorizing the bid award to Omega Plumbing. This is for the plumbing portion of the City Center at the total cost of $410,500.
So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderwoman Schler for resolution authorizing bid award project, bid award to Omega Plumbing Incorporated for the City Center project. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1069. Good thing I can count.
Thank you. Next is a resolution authorizing a bid award to Mechanical Concepts. This is for the mechanical portions of the City Center at the total cost of $740,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for resolution authorizing bid award to Mechanical Concepts of Illinois Incorporated for the City Center project. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1070.
Thank you. Next is a resolution authorizing bid award to Concrete by Wagner. This is for the concrete portion on the exterior of the building to the cost of $1,606,937.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro for resolution authorizing bid award to Concrete by Wagner for the City Center, City Center project. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1071.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing the bid award to Tim Electric, and this is for the electrical work at the building for the cost of $1,241,855.
So moved, mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution authorizing bid award to Tim Electric Incorporated for the City Center project. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1072.
Next, we have the resolution authorizing the bid award to J. Ross &amp; Company for the civil portions. This is for the site work at the City Center to the cost of $1,48,727.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for a resolution authorizing bid award to J. Ross &amp; Company Incorporated for the City Center project. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1073.
And the final item in this set of approvals is the resolution authorizing execution of proposals for the steel purchase and assembly and framing for the proposed City Hall and Police Station. The only variance from the previous resolutions is that this one, we would be waiving the bid on per our discussion at the work session for the direct purchase and assembly, so we would be working with Corsetti Structural Steel for the steel purchase and assembly. That amount would be $525,575, and then Cosgrove Construction for the steel framing in the amount of $2,157,950. That would be a total project amount for those two contractors of $2,683,525.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro for a resolution authorizing execution of proposals for steel purchase, assembly, and framing for the proposed City Hall and Police Station, awarding the bids to both Corsetti Structural Steel Incorporated and to Cosgrove Construction Incorporated. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1074.
And with that, that was the final agenda item I had this evening. The informational report is on file. I would be happy to take any questions.
Questions of the city administrator. I will say that all of those resolutions that were passed here unanimously by city council has been the hard work over the past five years by city staff in this council and previous councils for the construction of a new City Hall and a new Police Station, the property behind the Menard, behind the library. It's long overdue for the city of Crest Hill. It's going to be a tremendous improvement, tremendous asset, and it'll be a building that will be with us for the next 40 to 50 years. So I thank city council and staff for all of their hard work in making this come true. This is a, the awarding of the bids will start the project off. There will be more bids to come in the future. Again, we are doing this in-house where we are the general contractor, so we are saving a tremendous amount of money by having our own building Inspector Kirk Wilkins in charge of the general, being the general contractor for the building of these two buildings. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Heather. Moving on to Public Works Department, our director of Public Works, Tom Meggs. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, mayor and council. Three items on the agenda this evening. The first is intergovernmental agreement with Will County for folding stop signs at signalized intersections. That is four intersections along Weber Road as presented to council at the last work session. I seek your approval to enter into that intergovernmental agreement.
So moved, mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for an intergovernmental agreement with Will County for the folding stop signs at signalized intersections along the Weber Road corridor in the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code that pertains to the conversation held at the last work session regarding the MFT budget.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderwoman Schler for the resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for MFT projects. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1075.
Thank you. And the final item is a maintenance engineering agreement to be performed by the consulting engineer. This, again, is relevant to the MFT budget.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderman Albert for maintenance engineering to be performed by a consulting engineer. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, mayor. That's the final item on the agenda for Public Works. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone may have this evening.
Okay, any questions of Public Works? Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Our Community Development Department, Mr. McMaster was sick today. It's in your packet. You do have the approval of your 2020 bid for vegetating, or vegetation, cutting. The recommendation is, well, let me say that there were several applications that were sent out, two were returned, one by Rapid Landscaping and one by Full Force LLC. The recommendation is to take the lower bid of Rapid Landscaping for this coming summer season and the cutting of grass. Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Schler, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to awarding the bid to Rapid Landscaping Incorporated? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, if there are any questions, try to answer them if you have any. Reports are also in the packet for the letters that were sent out for the month of February for the code enforcement. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. Just to touch on a memo I put in your packet, we did today promote Officer Terry Finolio to the rank of sergeant, and as soon as he's promoted, he's out on the road, so he's had some time to move into it as an officer in charge, and he's, he's been riding with other sergeants, so they've kind of gotten him up to speed. He will be attending a supervisory class once one is open, since everything's been canceled, but he's up and running, and later, hopefully, middle part of April, I'm going to have Officer Justin O'Brien, who is currently assigned to that undercover unit, who will be coming to be promoted as the second sergeant, and that will bring us up to five that you authorized when we began this program. I don't have anything else. I'd just like to congratulate them and wish them the best of luck. I have all the faith that they're going to do a good job.
Well, congratulations to them, too. I agree with you. I think you have two fine individuals there.
Thank you. Any questions, comments to the police chief? Okay, and congratulations to Sergeant Pesaveto with his retirement. He's been with us almost 40 years.
Yes.
And congratulations to both, both Officer Finolio and Officer O'Brien for their promotion to the rank of sergeant, and I know that they will do a great job. Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thanks, mayor.
Moving on to the mayor's report, I have two agenda, actually, two agenda items for tonight. The first one is A.B. Gusto's One Day Liquor License Waiver. We discussed this last week at the work session. Ed, do you remember the date of that event?
It is...
I did not bring the sheet in. It's kind of a busy day today.
I'm making it on there.
Was it June 23rd, maybe?
It is June 28th.
June 28th, okay. So on June 28th, just like last year, but last year they had a rain out. It was a terrible day. They are looking to do a fundraiser for the 100 Club of Will County. That is for the spouses of officers that are killed in the line of duty in Will County. It will be a one-day event at the site at A.B. Gusto's. They will have food.
I think the pasta was what was recommended, pasta, spaghetti.
They are going to have bands, they're going to have a beanbag tournament, and all the money raised is going to go to the 100 Club of Will County. So the request from A.B. Gusto's and Mr. Brian Lewandowski is a one-day waiver of the one-day liquor license in the amount of $50 from the city for part of a donation to the fundraiser. Motion would be in order?
What happens if it's still banned? There's, I mean, right now, nobody, no.
Nobody does know, but it's pretty far out, so we'll just...
So if we vote for it, does that mean we're given permission to still do it? Or, I mean, would that...
Are they aware of it?
...of the city?
No, I mean, right now, obviously, if the governor issues another order, that would supersede whatever approvals we have going on.
But they're aware of it?
Yes.
I just want to make sure they're aware of it.
Yes, I actually spoke with him yesterday, so... Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Overland, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for a waiver of the one-day liquor license for the June 28, 2020 event at A.B. Gusto's. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Barbara Schler.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, I put a letter in your packet, which was dropped off here Friday, last Friday, from Crest Hill Pony Baseball for an ad in their donation book for the 2020 baseball season in the amount of $65. The city of Crest Hill has participated in this ad donation for several years. I would recommend the approval for a donation and an ad in the program book.
So moved, Mayor.
Second. A motion by Alderman Cola di Pietro, seconded by Alderman Albert, for a $65 ad in the Crest Hill Pony Baseball 2020 roster book. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of announcements here tonight. First one, everybody should have, everybody that filled out their rebate form last fall between October and December, filled it out correctly and returned it to City Hall, should have received your property tax rebate check today in the mail. It's in the green envelope from the city of Crest Hill. If you did not get it today, you should be getting it within the next couple of days. That is the seventh year in a row that this city has rebated a property tax rebate of 25% on a municipal portion of your Crest, of your Will County tax bill, which there are several entities. This just is 25% on the Crest Hill portion. Again, it's the seventh year in a row. There was a promise that was made from the 2012 referendum, and the city council has kept their promise for the last seven years with the rebate check. So, again, if you filled it out correctly and you turned it back in, you should have received it. And if not, call us. And if you did not fill out the form, again, this fall coming up, you'll have to fill out another form. So I would suggest that if you did not fill one out, you fill it out for next year. The next is the census, the 2020 census. It happens every 10 years. First of all, you should have received two letters in the mail within the last week from the census and asking you to use the computer and to report the amount of people in your home and answer the questions online. If you do not do that within the next two to three weeks, you're going to be receiving another letter in the mail that will probably be a questionnaire in print form that will tell you to please cooperate by filling out that form. And if that fails, then you will be receiving a visit from a census taker that will be asking you questions and knocking on your door. So I cannot tell you how important it is that you cooperate with the census and fill out the forms. So the city of Crest Hill will get the proper count on their population, and therefore, that will affect how many congressional districts we have in the state of Illinois for representation. And it'll also be how much money per individual the city of Crest Hill will receive for each resident, no matter the age, to provide the services that you've come to expect for many, many years in the city of Crest Hill. So I ask for your cooperation in this venture, and I ask for you to take the time. It should only take about 10 minutes for you to fill out the form online or in writing. So please cooperate so the accurate count will be made for the city of Crest Hill. And again, I know last meeting, I'm going to tell this for the next several meetings, we are in a campaign for a new Vietnam memorial stone out in our memorial garden. So if anyone would like to make a personal donation to the purchase, which we expect to be around $15,000 for the new memorial stone, which will then be all moved with the completion of new City Hall, probably in the spring or the fall of '21 or the spring of '22. You can certainly write your personal check and make it out to the Crest Hill Veterans/Policewoman Memorial Committee. Send it to City Hall here at 1610 Plainfield Road in care of myself, Mayor Raymond Solomon. And we would appreciate any and all donations, no matter how large or how small. And we'll go to memorialize those Vietnam veterans who made the sacrifice back in the 1960s and 1970s and never got their correct due when they returned home. So we certainly appreciate all of our veterans for the freedoms that we enjoy today. So again, please feel free to send any and all donations that you would like to Crest Hill Veterans-Policewoman Memorial Committee. And with that, I have an announcement, but I am going to go to the podium for that announcement. First of all, let me say that I'm sure that everybody has been inundated with all of the news from the news media and the federal government, the state government. And I want our residents to know that we have been on top of this at City Hall. Myself and city staff has been working along with the governor's office, with the health department, and every other organization. And I will tell you that there has been a lot of discussions of our course of action. And then late Friday afternoon, I'm sure everybody was aware that they received notice that all of the schools in Illinois were going to be closed by Governor Pritzker. And I will personally tell you that that was kind of the deciding moment for me, when all of the schools were closed. But I will tell you, I'm not the type of person that makes rash decisions. I am the type of person that would like to go home and sleep on it for at least a day or two, think about it, and then come back and decide what the plan of action would be. So that is what I did over the weekend. And then, you know, as everybody else is aware, that the casinos were closed in Illinois, the restaurants, the bars, and everything else. And I will tell you, when I woke up Sunday morning, I had made my decision of the plan of action that needed to be taken here in the city of Crest Hill. And we met with all the employees this morning. Everybody was contacted this afternoon from city council, the elected officials. And, you know, I will tell you that, again, I'm not the type of person that likes to read anything. I like to tell you from my heart, and I like to tell you off the cuff of what I believe. But this is very important. So I drafted a letter during the day on Sunday, and I would like to share that with everybody that's listening to us on television and tell you the course of action that we are going to implement here at City Hall. And so with that, if you would just bear with me as I read what I wrote over the weekend. Dear residents, I, like you, over the past few weeks, have been consumed with the news media and the press conferences concerning the coronavirus. It is evident that this is a serious situation and that we are currently living in some extraordinary times that will cause many disruptions in our daily lives. It is also apparent that this situation will probably get worse before it gets better. As mayor, I am responsible for the health, the safety, and the welfare of all of our residents and employees. We, as a city, have been monitoring the daily updates from the World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, and the Illinois Department of Health, and have been included in conference calls with the governor's office regarding the severity of this pandemic. It is apparent that through the actions of President Trump and the federal government, and Governor Pritzker and the state government, that both are trying to reduce the amount of interactions that individuals have with one another. With the federal reduction of air travel, the increase of the availability of testing kits, the cancellation of most major sporting events, and now with the closing of several of the entities at the state level, which most recently include the closing of all Illinois schools, the casinos, the restaurants, and the bars to the end of the month. It is evident that they are limiting several venues in which a large number of people attend in an attempt to reduce the interaction and contact between people, and are urging people to stay home in an attempt to reduce the spread of the virus. With all of these actions, we, as the city of Crest Hill, are being proactive in attempting to flatten the curve, which I agree is the best course of action. As you are also aware, the city of Crest Hill has a large number of senior citizens. And it has been reported that our senior population is the most vulnerable and the most at risk to the most serious effects of this virus. I urge all of our residents, especially our senior residents, to limit your activities and to stay in your homes as much as possible. I am aware that this will cause many disruptions to your lives, but we all need to do our part to reduce the spread of COVID-19. In response to the guidance from the public health officials regarding the most effective strategies to prevent the spread of illness, the city of Crest Hill is taking the following preemptive measures. Number one, effective tomorrow, Tuesday, March 17 through March 30, 2020, the city of Crest Hill City Hall will be closed and will be suspending all non-emergency operations. I want you to be aware that there will be no disruptions of emergency public services, which will include the police, the water department, and the sewer department. Number two, per our agreement with the Will County Clerk's Office, Crest Hill City Hall will remain open on Tuesday, March 17, as a polling place for the relocation of the polling place at Willow Falls from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Number three, all public meetings have been canceled for the next two weeks, at which time the situation will be assessed. These meetings include the March 23 work session and the March 30 work session and the March 18 administrative hearing. Number four, garbage service will be provided on your regularly scheduled date. Number five, residents should still call 911 in cases of emergencies and call 815-741-5111 for all other non-emergency events. If you are not already registered for the city's emergency notification program, smart message, please sign up at cityofcresthill.com/166-emergency-alerts-sign-up. Number seven, the public should continue to call the city's general phone number at 815-741-5100, and phone calls will be directed to the correct staff person who will respond in as timely a manner as possible. Questions can also be sent to webadmin@cityofcresthill.com. Number eight, bill payments may be dropped into the white City of Crest Hill mailbox next to the entry of City Hall. This box will be emptied daily. As this is a developing situation, the city will monitor and assess these protocols and adjust as needed. The city will alert the community via smart messages, city website, community access television channel six, and local news media when the operation's suspension period ends. I thank you for your cooperation and your support during this challenging times. May God bless you and keep you in his care. Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor of the city of Crest Hill. I will tell you that we will continue to monitor the situation. We will try to keep everybody as up to date as possible. I am sure there are going to be bumps in the roads that we're going to have to deal with, and we will try to do those. We will do it to the best of our ability. I know that it's going to be a disruption in the lives of many people with the closing of the restaurants and everything else. I think we all have to take a little patience. This is the best course of action for the city of Crest Hill to take at this time. We need to try and keep this as low as possible before it gets out of hand and we run out of emergency room spaces for people to be helped that really do need the help. So I urge all of our residents to please stay home, cut down on your daily activities, and, you know, hopefully, this will end sooner than later. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our city administrator, Heather McGuire, if she would like to add any comments and give you a little bit more of how we're planning on going to handle day-to-day operations here at City Hall with a limited staff. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. We have set up as many employees as possible to work from home, including laptops and cell phones. We will have a staff member in here on a rotational basis so that we do not have employees grouped together while we're still resuming operations here. But there will be somebody in the office every day to answer messages, to forward anything out to the departments as necessary. And then we will have all the department heads as well as anybody else that can work from home, working from home with those laptops. So certainly, reach out to City Hall if there are questions. Everybody will be checking emails and ensuring that we still can get residents the services that they do need.
Any comments from council?
Well, I think as a city, we all need to be very, very cautious and limit our exposure as much as we can. And things that aren't really that necessary, you know, can wait for another day. I think the situation, I mean, I know we've already had a case here in Will County that's been confirmed. We want to limit the exposure and the damage as much as we can. You know, you can't go back and redo this. There's only one chance. You have to do this the right way. So when the governor did what he did, I think the sensible thing is for people to all limit, stay home as much as you can for two weeks. The less you go out, the better. And I don't want to see any of our residents contract this or, worse yet, pass from this. So please use common sense. Wash your hands. I know there's even an app you can get on Tinder something that reminds you to wash your hands every two hours. Just constant things out there and to make sure you wash them properly. I saw a doctor showing people how to wash them properly, you know, to make sure you scrub in between the nails, everything. This is very important, very important. And I'm sure you would not want to think that anybody you came in contact with, you might have given it to them. So please, everyone, please be careful.
Anybody else?
I have a question.
Sure.
So since we're not going to have work sessions and a few people have reached out, since other municipalities are helping the resident with some late payments on water bills and et cetera, is the city, or are we going to work on something to help?
Yeah.
The residents that they're not going to be working and they're going to have shut off water? Because the state of Joliet already have put something, many municipalities have, and what we're doing as a city.
Yeah, when we met with all the department heads today, I'll let Heather explain that.
We actually do not have any current bill dues, bill dates due. They're not going out until the next week, and they will not be due until April. So right now, nobody will be in the position of being shut off or having to have any payments waived or any late fees waived. So when we do resume or if we get to the point before next month that we're still not reconvening, we can have that discussion as a city council if we want to give some grace, maybe an extra few weeks. But that's something that we're not up against right now because we're on an off cycle of our billing due date. So nobody is in the position right now that they will be shut off or be late on their bill.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I do have one comment. On behalf of the city clerk's office, there will be no interruption with our office either. Our main concern are the residents, the employees. I know I reached out to Heather on Sunday with my concerns regarding this, and thank you. Heather, I know you have scrambled today with employees updating. Mayor, we had all received a call from you today, too. But the main thing is, all employees are ready, able to help any way they can, and they will be available. So everyone is pitching in. We have, hopefully, someone coming in here to clean good, too. So they have all cleaned desks off and everything. So we're all getting ready. Claudia walked in tonight with a can of Lysol spraying each of us, so I think we're all safe for this evening. But like I said, you know, the main thing is, you know, the safety, health of our residents and our employees. And I think this is a great effort with the city, and I fully support it. So thank you very much for everything.
And again, to our residents, we just ask for your cooperation and your patience in this issue. And feel free to get ahold of any of us by phone, by emails, however you wish to. We will all be available to try and help you out. We're here to work with you, not against you, to try and keep this under control. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is it for the mayor's report. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them. Hearing none, we'll move on to the city clerk's report. Our city clerk, Vicki Hethen, good evening, Beck.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I do have one item on the agenda this evening. The city of Crest Hill accepted bids for a vacant lot located along Webb Street between the intersection of Webb and Plainfield Road to the northeast and Park Row Street to the southwest. PIN number 11-04-31-110-003-0000. Notice of the sale was published in the Joliet Herald News. Bids were accepted until 4:00 p.m. on Friday, March 13. One bid, excuse me, it's all that Lysol. One bid was submitted to the city clerk's office. I will open that bid now and read the results. Thank you, Viana. We forgot the letter opener, though.
Is that sanitized?
Pardon?
Is the letter open sanitized?
I sanitized this, actually. Bid submitted, this is dated February 24, 2020. William Slimack of 2128 Webb Street bids the amount of $1.01 for the said property of the city of Crest Hill, leaving the lot number 423, identified as PIN number 11-04-31-110-003-0000. He indicates that he has maintained the lot number 423 for the past 44 years with no compensation in the city's lack of knowledge of ownership. Bid amount is $1.01. This will now be turned over to council for further direction if you want to accept, deny, or table the bid results.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept that offer on that lot number.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Cola di Pietro to accept the bid of Mr. Slimack at $1.01 for the property in question. Questions or comments from city council? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Does that have to be a certified check or what?
Work on finalizing an agreement to properly transfer ownership.
And the clerk's office will be, no interruption, so we'll be happy to take it.
I will say, Bill, thank you for maintaining that property for 44 years. And it was just most recently brought to our attention that this was under city's property. Very small piece of property, very, very small piece of property. So thank you for 44 years of maintenance on that property.
And can I add one thing to the mayor's report?
Could you please come to the podium, sir, so we can hear you? Thank you.
I'd like to add one thing to the mayor's report. There's a lot of scams going out there.
Yes.
We've received one recently for myself, my social security card being compromised in South Texas. I've had friends of mine have different instances with their social security and just scamming for everything out possible.
Correct.
So just, people beware, seniors beware.
My advice, if you don't know who's calling you, don't answer the phone. See if they leave a message, or they're probably, 99% of them are going to hang up the phone.
I did call Social Security Administration on that, and they're well aware of it. And they said that they send a certified letter
Yep, they do not.
Prior to any kind of phone calls whatsoever. So just be careful.
Well, you would be surprised how many people don't heed that advice. I deal with them every single day, and it's very sad. And I tell them all the time, never, ever give your personal information out. If it's a legitimate source, they will contact you in a legitimate fashion. Never give any personal information, social security, bank account numbers, routing numbers, anything to anyone on the phone. I can't stress that enough. I mean, every day, I deal with this. I see this. I see the damage this does, the money. It's very sad. So I implore people, if you do answer that phone, don't give them any information, right?
Mayor, if I can just piggyback off of what you're saying, complimenting Bill for maintaining the property. He also does a great job of maintaining a lot of the area around the park, the Stanley Augustus Park right there. So thank you, Bill, for that as well.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, Beck?
No, that's all I have this evening. Stay safe, everyone, and be healthy.
Any questions of city clerk? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Moving on to our city treasurer's report. Our city treasurer, Glenn Conicklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'd like to report our regular overtime payroll from February 17, 2020, through March 1 of 2020 in the amount of $224,501.17. Only item I ask for action on is I seek your approval on our list of bills, which in that same time period totaled $413,374.43.
So moved, this presented.
Motion by Alderman Overland, seconded by Alderman Scoler to approve the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Marco Cola di Pietro?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Barbara Scoler?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all. I'd entertain any questions.
Questions of city treasurer? Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business, anybody? Committee liaison reports, anyone? City council comments, positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? We'll begin with Ward 2 tonight, Alderman Gazal.
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that this is a time that we should have more compassion with others. I understand everybody is freaking out
I understand it, whether he's freaking out and getting nervous and worried about food and sanitizer, toilet paper, et cetera. Let's share with our community. Let's hand a little of what we have to the people in need. Use social media for that. Also, a reminder, please, please, let's start helping our local businesses. As you know, restaurants, bars, et cetera will be closed. Let's order takeout from Crest Hill shop local. And don't forget to vote tomorrow. It's really important. Just bring your sanitizer with you. Thank you, man.
Alderman Schaller.
Just want to remind everyone to vote tomorrow and stay safe and sanitize before you go. And I, for one, will be patronizing the businesses in Crest Hill for restaurants and so forth. It means a lot to them.
Ward 1, Alderman Dyke.
I want to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day and everybody stay safe and healthy.
Ward 4, Alderman Kubal.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to make a comment. From Ward 4, we have some trucking companies and distribution centers and manufacturers in Ward 4, and I want to thank those gentlemen, in particular the ones I see with the trucking companies that are still out working every day, delivering our products to us, delivering them to the stores, and the folks that are working in the stores that are handing out those groceries to us. And I make a point when I go in the store and I thank them for being there. So I want to thank them personally on the television here right now for doing that for us. I don't take it for granted. I'm sure nobody else does either. That's it.
Alderman Albert.
Hey, mayor, just wanted to thank the residents and friends and colleagues that have reached out to me and my family with the passing of my grandmother. My mom's mom passed away last Monday at 94 years old. She was a proud Crest Hill resident for almost seven decades as an election judge. She loved Crest Hill, so thanks again for your prayers.
Ward 3, Alderman Cola de Pietro.
My thoughts about to your family, Nate, on the passing of your grandmother. Also, to remind everybody, the best line of defense is to wash your hands frequently, soap and water, and Happy St. Joseph's Day.
Yeah, today, right? Today.
I think so, yeah.
Alderman Oberlin.
Well, I want to also wish everyone Happy St. Patty's Day, and please, as everyone else has said, wash your hands. When you go to vote tomorrow, the Will County Clerk also said bring your own pen, your hand sanitizer, then you don't have to worry about they're trying to clean, but you bring your own pen, go in there as soon as you get out, sanitize your hands and your pen. But please do vote. Please don't let this stop you from voting. And another note on the census, I want to reiterate the importance and that this information is for the Census Bureau only. It's not going to be turned over to any other government agency. Please don't be afraid to answer these questions and fill this out. It's for the census only, which can only benefit our city and our citizens. So please, don't be afraid to turn it in. And I want to congratulate Joe Pezz on his retirement, our two new sergeants, whom I adore both of them. Congratulations on that, and congratulations on your new purchase.
Okay, public comment. Anyone would like to address city council? Need to step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city administrator, Heather McGuire, is there a need for an executive session?
No, there's not, mayor.
Motion to adjourn, mayor.
Second.
We have motion for an adjournment by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Albert. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli Petro.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Barbara Schaller.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:51 p.m. Thank you and good evening. Be safe, be healthy, and please stay home and get all your food from carryouts.